All right. Is it on? It's on. All right, okay. At this time, I'm calling the June Board of Ed meeting to order. Donna, can we please have a reading of the OPMA?
Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate public notice of this meeting has been given by the Secretary of the Mount Holly Board of Education in the following manners: posting written notice on the official bulletin board of the Board of Education office; emailing written notice to the Burlington County Times and the Courier-Post; filing written notice with the Clerk of Mount Holly Township.
Thank you very much. Please stand for their pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lepa, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Allen. Ms. Ciati.
Here.
Mr. Kolor. Ms. Michinski.
Here.
President DeFaco.
Present. I want to note that both Tim and Stephanie are excused absences. The Code of Ethics for the Board is listed on tonight's agenda, which is in the back of the room, as well as online. Presentations. No, we don't have any, right? It's just in the wrong spot. That's fine. That's fine. All right. I'm going to open the floor for public comment on agenda items, if anyone has anything that they would like to discuss. Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from May 29th for the actual meeting and executive, executive session, one, two, and three?
All motion.
Second. And a roll call, please.
Ms. Ciati.
Yes.
Ms. Michinski.
Yes.
President DeFaco.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And do we have any communications?
Yes, I have communications. So first, I would like to congratulate all of our eighth graders that moved on to RV. It was a very nice ceremony. They always do, the eighth grade teachers and whoever is part of the graduation committee, they do a phenomenal job. Shout out to Mr. Boyle for getting the kids synchronized during that event.
Favorite part.
So another great graduating ceremony. Shout out to our fourth grade, fourth graders that are moving up to Holbein. That was a great ceremony. That was pretty windy that day. Speeches were flying all over the place, but it's always great to see the kids smiling and dressed up and looking beautiful. And shout out to our graduating, Mount Holly alumni, our RV class of 2024. Always such a satisfying experience to see some of the kids that I used to chase in Falwell and the tears and the screaming and all of those things culminate to them just graduating and looking like young men and women. And it's just so beautiful to see. And I encourage anybody to go to an RV graduation, if not every single year, to see some of those kids that we sometimes struggle with, but always had a good time with. So shout out to them. I'm going to keep it rolling by saying congratulations to Holbein. I think sometimes it is forgotten that we are still trying to obtain the Blue Ribbon status in all of, in our school district. And I'm happy to say that Holbein is one step away. They are now at Beacon status and the next status is Lighthouse, which is the national Blue Ribbon status. So I just want to read this letter from April Stansberry, who is from Blue Ribbon. Says, "We are pleased to announce FW Holbein Middle School..." Sorry, that's my damn trilequism. Um, sorry. "We are pleased to announce FW Holbein Middle School has been named a 2024 Blue Ribbon Beacon School. We are greatly honored to recognize such a deserving school, working so diligently to fulfill the many learning needs of all students. Through the Blue Ribbon process, schools have engaged their entire, the school has engaged their entire community to identify and build on strengths and overcome challenges. They will be shared with other schools across the country, and it is their belief that they will always have room for improvement and fulfilling the ever-changing needs of our children." So this award will be presented during the Blue Ribbon Schools Conference in Orlando, Florida, at Disney's Coronado Springs Resort this fall, December the 4th. And they are just congratulating us and rooting us on to make that Lighthouse status. So kudos to Holbein. My next communication is to just publicly thank Bill Buffa for all of his years of service to our school district. He's been here nine years, and I can tell you that he has made our campuses a place of envy in the eyes of others. They come, visitors come to our campuses and they always acknowledge how clean they are, our schools are clean, our exteriors are always looking pretty good. And, you know, I'm always proud to highlight that in our school district. So it takes a lot of work to coordinate these efforts, and Bill just does it with such, just, he has so much pride in his people and our school district. A lot of people don't realize, but Bill Buffa was a former student here in Mount Holly School District, and he's just a phenomenal guy. So if you happen to see him around, because he's a local guy, just tell him thanks. And lastly, I want to thank Mary Brennan, who is stepping down as the President of the MHTDA. I want to thank her for her years of service. I don't know how long Mary's been doing it. I know she's been doing it long enough to be thankful she's not doing it anymore, but I have a lot of respect for Mary. And as we both will agree on this one, this time, we don't always see eye to eye, but we have a lot of respect for one another. And I just want to fully respect her and honor her at this point in time and say thank you for her service during her reign as President of the MHTDA. Those are my communications.
Thank you. I don't, I don't have anything to follow that with. Committee reports, do we have any? I just wanted, I just wanted to mention the policies that are on the agenda. They're all just legal changes to vocabulary. Except one, but I'm pulling it. And we'll discuss that at a later date. I have nothing for President's reports. Ms. Lepa, do you have anything?
I would just like to thank Mr. Buffa as well for all his years of service. It's been a great pleasure and honor to work with him. I worked with him when I was here before, and I can attest to Bob's statements that he has made a remarkable difference in our schools, and he will be missed. But I also look forward to working with our new facilities director, Mr. Vickers, who will be starting shortly.
All right. Mr. Mungo, can we have a recommendation?
Well, superintendent's report.
Oh, sorry. I thought that's what you did already.
Oh, it's okay. I always announce the HIBs. So we had three HIBs in the month of June. All three were unfounded, and that was from the Holbein School.
Okay.
So I would like to recommend approval of PN01 through PN04, ISS01 through ISS02, OP01 through OP11, VA01 through VA26, and that includes all the agenda items as well.
Excellent. Thank you. I would like to pull PN01 from the consent agenda and OP04 from the consent agenda. Does anybody else have anything else that they'd like to pull?
Yeah, I'm just looking at what you're pulling. Oh, yeah, okay.
All right. Can I have a motion on the consent minus PN01 and OP04?
All motion.
Thank you. And a roll call.
Ms. Ciati.
Yes.
Ms. Michinski.
Yes.
President DeFaco.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
PN01, we're going to do the motion, and then we're going to talk. And we're going to, do you want to vote first? We'll just vote. We already know what the outcome is. We just, all right, I'm going to motion to approve PN01.
I'll second.
And then a roll call. Yep. I'm sorry.
I, I get it. I'm just, I guess I'm...
Because they're here, so I wanted to...
Oh, okay. Sorry, y'all. I was like, listen.
Ms. Ciati.
Yes.
Ms. Michinski. President DeFaco.
Yes.
Would you like to start us off?
Um, welcome. Welcome back. So we have Lydia Baker. Lydia, you can stand up, please. Congratulations. Lydia will be working in our third, with our third grade team. She will be not replacing, but she will be taking over the responsibilities left by Jill Paterno. So Lydia did student teaching in that same classroom, and I know that she did a phenomenal job during the interview process, and I've heard great things about her in the classroom. So welcome to our team. As our new graduate.
Awesome. Congratulations.
And then we also have Lindsay Chiquino. Lindsay, please stand, just in case people don't know who you are. Lindsay Chiquino is now our supervisor of student programs. Looking forward to working with Lindsay. Lindsay has been in the district for eight years now. Lindsay knows our district in and out. She knows our kids. She loves our kids. She knows, I think, every student by name. I don't know how she does it. Very envious of that. But she's going to be a really key integral part of trying to just link all of our different tiers and make sure that we can break those silos. So welcome to the admin team, Lindsay. All right, and that's...
Congratulations. Okay, OP04, which is the policies. There it is. I don't know what page that is. I'm sorry. There you go. Okay. I want to pull one of them and table it for further discussion. Do I do that before or after we make a motion?
So you can...
Excellent. Okay. I would like to make a motion to table Policy 2260 for further discussion at our next work session.
Oh, awesome.
Thank you. And I need a roll call for that.
Ms. Ciati.
Yes.
Ms. Michinski.
Yes.
President DeFaco.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And then I'd like to make a motion to approve the rest of them.
Oh, I'll second.
Ms. Ciati.
Yes.
Ms. Michinski.
Yes.
President DeFaco.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That was harmless. My computer is scrolling down slowly. All right. So I'm going to, do we have any old or new business from the Board?
No, I've been in the days for the past three weeks.
It's summer. It's the end of school. It's June. It's awful. Okay. The only thing, it's kind of old and new business that I want to say to the Board, and I will email because we're missing some people, is that we have to do our Board self-evaluation. There is one also for you, and there's also one for Donna to fill out, because that's what we're going to go over in July. That's all I have for that. At this time, I'm going to open the floor for public comment on anything you would like to discuss at all, anything.
Everyone's like, absolutely not.
No.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right. Board. Ms. Ciati, I will start with you.
What's it, the June 26th, right? Okay. Three days ago, it was June 1st.
It was.
But I'm so glad. Oh, my God, I just floated in my pool today. It was so nice. It was so nice. The only child out of here was my son, which was good. Yes, congratulations. Holbein's graduation, I always love. I can't wait till next year when Anthony graduates. It's just so neat how they do it. I just love it. The kids were phenomenal. I cried, of course, because I cry every time I go. So exciting for that. Congratulations to all of them. There were some awesome awards that were given at that ceremony, and it was pretty Lynn's, dude, I'm so excited for you. I can't even stand it. This is awesome. Congratulations. I can't think of anybody else who would deserve something like this and who's going to like, I can't curse, so kick butt in this. So yay, and welcome. And I love the fact that you are a student teacher and you're, like, that should, that's what, that's how this should work.
Yep.
So that is fabulous and welcome. Yeah, but the rest of summer go nice and slow.
Yeah. I like that. Nice and slow.
I don't have summer, guys.
Sorry. Sorry.
It was nice because the air conditioning broke in our building this week, and I got to work from home all week. That was nice. But no, congratulations. I'm excited because, you know, Zoe will be excited to hear, you know, that some of her favorites are moving up. She won't understand anything about what I'm saying. She'll just say, oh, that's cool.
Congratulations on becoming a permanent person here. And... Yeah, it's not everything, but all I got to say...
All right.
Go first, next to everything, I'm done.
Sorry. I agree. I agree with all of that. I'm glad that you are now a permanent member. And Lindsay, when Rob first told me about his plan for all of the tiers being, you know, having someone watching over and making sure everything's working properly, and he said you were going to do it, I was like, this is going to be perfect. This is, this is just finally going to all work out, and it's going to be great. So I'm very excited about next year.
No pressure.
Nope, no, no pressure. I want to thank Bill Buffa because it really was, you can just ditto.
I love Bill Buffa.
He's family to us because we just loved having him here, and I'm sure we'll still see him around town. I am excited about Jason coming in. He seems like a very nice guy. He was at STEM night, too, so it was nice to see him with the kids. So that was awesome. I also want to thank, we have a lot of PTA members, PTA, PTO members, that, I'm going to say graduated out this year.
Yeah.
And so now we have a lot of new ones, but the ones that graduated out, I have known since their kids were in preschool, and they're just such fantastic human beings, and I really, really appreciate all of their hard work.
Yeah.
And I just want to give them a shout out and say thank you. You are seen, and we appreciate everything that you have done.
Everything I have?
I think that's everything I have. Congratulations, Holbein, for Lighthouse. That's awesome. Oh, yes.
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 We are going to go into executive session. It'll take 15 to 30 minutes, and we will have an action afterwards, but it is for matters, personnel matters.
Selective bargaining.
Yes.
Don't say that.
Yeah, you don't...
They don't, don't.
You could.
You could. I feel like don't.
Summer.
Thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'll make a motion to go and, there we go. And we are all in...